Thank you. All right, three o'clock. Thanks all for being here, appreciate it. Thanks for those online. At the start of the meeting, I will pass on that. Over the last week or so?
On December 20th.
On December 20th, Crystal was notified that there was a third application proposal that had come in in a timely manner or had attempted to come in but was blocked because of the filters that the county has at IT from a firm called Better City. And all we have seen is an email that doesn't really have any substance.
That was the fact that it was sent by people.
Oh, got it, right.
That showed the date, December 4th. And then they did finally were able to send the proposal. So those people on committee have that.
Oh, excellent, very good. So that's right, Brian mentioned that this morning. The EDC scoring committee is working on that. And with that in mind, I'll turn to my objective for this time today. And it's certainly to be supplemented by what Brian and John would like to see. My objective for today and for as long as it takes really is to start creating the foundation for the relationship that will exist between the county and the new ADO in order to have, from my perspective, the kind of communication loop that satisfies both the needs that the commissioners provide, the kind of oversight that is appropriate in a relationship where there's substantial amounts of money, both directly from the county and directed by the county through the state, through an organization, and for the citizens of the county to be able to see what they're getting for their money. That's my objective for this particular meeting. I think it's premature, well, I believe it's premature to turn our attention to the score since we don't have to the proposal, since we don't have the third proposal scored by the EDC yet. Over to you, gentlemen.
Well, I don't have too much to add to that. I think I would like to see the third one scored. I think we need to do that and follow through with the process. As I said, Robert, I gave it a cursory look. I didn't go through it thoroughly. I think that would be important. Outside of that, I think I have enough information to make up my mind about how this should go. And, you know, that said, for my other fellow commissioners to take their time and think about and look at the scoring. You know, I probably am privy to more of the, obviously, having seen the applications and that. But yeah, today I would like us to have an opportunity to hear from either Ted or the board if they want to add anything to that, if they have anything to add or suggest, as well as Abby is representative maybe of EDC, if there's any comments or anything to that effect.
Great.
So.
Would you, I believe I asked Crystal earlier, not you, would you consider the third proposal a qualified proposal?
In the sense, I don't think there's anything that I saw that would disqualify it.
Okay, can I, can Robert get that as well then? Or I don't know if you've got it, but I certainly don't.
Abby, you haven't copied that.
I got it on six here.
Yep.
I, if you have it, if you don't, I mean, that's.
Not immediately, but if, yeah.
I just like to take a look at it.
There's a thought, and I've been thinking about this. There's a thought in a lot of people's minds that county tax dollars should be spent inside the county with people who live in the county. Not sure that I agree with that thought. I say county tax dollars should be spent on entity and people that do the best job possible for the county. Okay? For the county. And there's a distinction there. And, you know, some of our best employees happen to live in another state.
Now, sorry about you, Crystal.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, so going forward, I just think that that needs to be said. You know, although in the element we're talking about of economic development, I think Ponderay County needs to solve this problem for themselves. And we need to solve this problem. And I think the best equipped people to look at our problems and look at our shortcomings are the people that are here and the people that know and understand this place. Again, that goes back to my first point. The people that are best equipped for the job. And so if I say, well, I'm this person, I buy it. And again, I'm not speaking to this new bird, but I'm just outlining my prejudices. And on that.
Okay. John?
Yeah, I, you know, for goals, I, so tighter feedback loop. I'm okay with that. Really, the structure, as far as I'm concerned, could have worked with better bylaws, with if the EDC had better bylaws, had more large type bylaws and processes and stuff to that, some guardrails, some SOP. Like so many of our other boards and so many of our other committees, we have a commissioner liaison. And to me, that is sufficient. We have one whatever of the vote. It's a quarter, it's a fifth, it's a twelfth, it's whatever. That's an appropriate level of oversight to me. And not oversight, of engagement, of collaboration. For matters within the ADO, because the ADO has its own board, and I don't believe the commissioner's voice in the ADO should outstrip anyone's. As it pertains to the dollars themselves, which we, this body has the responsibility to disperse and disperse appropriately. I view that differently. So we have a conversation about what metrics, what feedback, what kind of reporting we would want from our ADO or for anyone doing any business for the county and say, man, it's anybody's game. If you're, if we're giving money to you, we had this conversation about the well. We're going to rehabilitate the wells with Arbutus. Okay, let's get them on a maintenance program. We're not just throwing taxpayer dollars. Very similar to that, in my estimation. If you can, that is my responsibility to the taxpayer, I believe, is accountability there, right? So we say, hey, I don't care if it's $1 or a quarter of a million dollars. You're going to prove that you're using these at a high level. And in many regards, that you're getting results, certainly eventually, or what is your plan to get results? And that's how you get recorded those dollars the next time. And we're going to go a year at a time or two years at a time or however else. We will have an ADO or we're not going to be eligible for the dollars. But I have made no bones about it. There is more economic development work to be done than we have hands on deck to do the work. And I will, all parties, I, frankly, I, anyone who's willing to ship in, in whatever capacity, I would like to see at the table, working towards this. I do, I, it is my expectation that they would be held to a similar standard as well. We did have the conversation about, you know, our, Ted has kind of reviewed their work for the county and said, hey, we think $35,000 is more appropriate or the number that's in there. And so it starts to reach a point where we want to be, I would like to see what our $35,000 gets us from Ted as well. It's going to be identical for the ADO. That's my piece. I think, I think like so many of these, you know, I'll pick on the wheat board because I don't think they'll take it personally. It's laws of entropy. I've got a bunch of 70-year-old farmers in there. Now talk to them about procurement procedures. And it's different language, it's right. They know more about weeds than all, they forgot more about weeds than I'll ever, ever know. They're really, really good at their job. But the landscape is changing and our requirements are changing. And so some of them are going to drag, take it and scream it into 2024, and that's just the way this goes. I think it's so critical to have the guardrails in place, to have black and white policy and SOP. And that was long winded. I'm trying to take up everybody's time here.
I'll just add to that, John, I think entering into relationships, whether contractual or otherwise, having a clear set of expectations is important. And that the expectations are clearly communicated ahead of time and spelled out in writing preferably in a way that everybody understands ahead of time is really helpful going forward. And in this case, I think the devil would be in the contract with the ADO. And that would be that instrument whereby the commissioners, the board of commissioners in consensus spells out their expectations of the ADO, of what that transparency and what that oversight, although that may be the wrong word, looks like. And so I think that is the instrument whereby that would happen, of those expectations and that this body come to a consensus of what that looks like and those expectations are spelled out in the contract with the ADO. In that contract that awards that. That is where things break down. You know, had that happened in business arrangements and relationships, they always break down over expectations and lack of communication. I expected this, I expected you to do this, you didn't do this. And sometimes those expectations are assumed and they're not accurate. And so to me, that's going forward, whoever we finally designate, that's going to be key that all sides are in agreement on that. So that's kind of along the lines of what John was saying. That killed a bunch more time, so.
Do, can we define, or do we know definitively if the balance of this ADO contract carries forward?
My understanding is that the EDC will be the ADO until June 30th of 2024. I believe I heard that articulated.
That is incorrect. So, what, what will happen is once the commissioners decide who the ADO will be, once that's designated, that'll be sent to the Department of Commerce and from that date forward. Because there is no current contract with Department of Commerce. So there aren't filing requirements currently because there is no executed contract, knowing this is going forward. Had the EDC signed the contract with Commerce, we would have been locked in for the remaining of the two-year term.
Got it.
So that's it. There is no executed contract at this time.
But the contract between the commissioners and the ADO, that's the contract I am talking about. Where the balance of that would carry forward from old ADO, which was EDC, to do ADO, whoever that is?
There would be a redesignation
Yes.
for whoever the commissioners decide, and that will be a new agreement designation.
So we would actually begin a contract of whatever term shortly thereafter?
To, so it'll be a shortened contract. So your end date for your designation will still be the same of 2025, June 30th, 2025. But it'll be if, if you decided today, it would be, you know, as soon as that designation happens is the back date for the contract with Commerce through the end of the two-year cycle.
I see what you're saying, okay. So they would, they would execute the balance of the contract with the attachment?
So then again, it would come back up to us at that time when we went through.
Right, well, frankly, we just did. We just went through the entire contract and made our changes, so. Yeah, I, I view the ADO contract as at about probably 96%. I maybe invited some recent changes, maybe a little closer than that. We're, it was less than a quarter ago. Dolly went right out with a fine toothpick and we added our company, so.
So, and here's where I'm starting to get puzzled because given the comments that we've all individually, and it seems like there's a collective will here to have a clear set of expectations spelled out in writing beforehand, you know, transparency, prove you're getting results or you don't get the money next time. I would submit that the current contract does not articulate that. And where I'm going with what my objective for this meeting is, is whether it's this contract or, you know, wiping this one out to have language added that does live up to what I articulated and I thought that you had just reinforced with your comments.
Well, I absolutely reinforce it with my comments. I think the differentiation is that we did just look at that contract. Was that '08, 2023, or I guess that's the contract number? Anyway, it wasn't very long ago. And then I feel like it's awfully close to adequate. I don't know on the other hour because I feel like in part the RFP considered the existing ADO contract, right, to that as part of the process. They're saying, we can't execute the things that you have in this contract. And to change it after the RFP process, is that maybe a little bit like changing horses midstream? Does that make any sense?
I don't think they had that contract available. That is, they didn't contract, it's not available to the, the people submitting RFPs.
It's a public document, everybody.
Oh, true, but it wasn't part of the package.
Right, I, I would be shocked if anybody responded to an RFP without reading the contract between the commissioners and the ADO.
So, so a public contract. First, this contract is dated the 4th of April, 2023.
Okay, so it's back there a little.
I voted against it in large part because it failed to embody the topics that we're now discussing, transparency, communication, expectations. So I would ask my commissioners to consider whether as we go forward and we're seeking to have the collective will of this body expressed in however we move forward, that you consider supplementing or replacing this document with something that I can vote for in good conscience because I believe it reflects the commitment to transparency and communication.
The short answer is yes, I would consider it. If this is a Trojan horse for more direct oversight from a commissioner, then that's hard no for me. That's not our place. They've got a board.
Same, I would just say that contract does represent the collective will of this body. And it is always our goal to have unanimity, but I'm not sure that that can be arrived at every time. And that is the collective will. And I agree with John that I would always consider that, Robert, and I would like your full participation in that. And I welcome suggestions for improving it. At the same time, you know, referencing our earlier discussion today, there are some fundamental differences we see of how things should be done. And, you know, to me, this is a process of establishing trust and establishing a working relationship with really a broad spectrum of the county, the representation. And so, yeah, I would consider it. I think it is a discussion we can have. We had that discussion then, we can improve upon it. I think we, we should look at it.
Great, with that in mind, I will, between now and when we next have this a discussion regarding this, I will type out that I believe that represents both the comments today and what would fit well in here. Is that sound reasonable?
And so that we're within the appropriate guardrails here. We are talking about the assignment of '09 funds to the ADO and the contract associated with that.
And we're also talking about the reporting responsibilities of the ADO back to the county commissioners so we have access to what's going.
Making an informed decision about those dollars, but it is specifically tied to that.
Well, it's, that's one part of it. The other part is, should this body, and it'll come up to a vote, have access to the, what's going on within the new ADO?
Right, I, yeah, and, and that part I feel like is implied. Education is just, it's just the cheapest way to help the people understand, to help us understand what's going on in any of these committees. I'm fully on board there. What I'm talking about is, is, is they have a, they have a board and that board says, you know what we need is a water park. I know, that's a strange idea and that could never come up. You know what we need is a water park. And the commissioners don't like the water park idea. Too bad. Too bad, that's not for us, right? So if you're talking about rewriting it in a way that we have authority more than our one vote on there, then, then save your ink. If you're talking about closing the feedback loop, having the transparent communication, we need to decide who those dollars go to, I'm all in.
All right, something up. I would also, I, Crystal, I'd like to make sure we have enough time for everyone to fully comment so we just go past.
Yeah, sure, Ken. I'm trying to be settled until 3:00.
Let's just plan on going till 3:00 o'clock. I'd like to turn it over to Kelly.
Thanks. I think that the right thing to do, and I'm speaking as Kelly, I'm speaking as my board because I haven't talked to them about this, is to score that and then for the EDC committee to decide who rises to the top, whether it's the board, Ted, or this other entity. That is my personal feeling that, you've got to go through that process. As far as, you know, a new contract with the county, I think a new contract is definitely needed. I would hope that you would get going on this for whoever is the ADO because of the public, Ponderay County is the one that's losing out right now. We're not getting the state dollars, we're not being able to do anything. So the same time is of the essence. You know, you need to roll with us and you need to roll quickly. So the longer you negotiate and everything, it just sets the county back. So my, my hope is you can get going on a new contract. You know, I read the contract between the county and the ADO. Yeah, I think it needs some, some changes. But I also agree with John, whether it's the board, Ted, or this other entity. You need to let them work. And if it's a water park, then they go for it. If they find the funding for it and everything, then why not? You know, if it's a, a business that puts in 10 jobs in three spots, then they need to go for that. It's, that's my opinion.
Well, it's mine too.
Yeah, so I'm not sure what kind of oversight you want, but it's, I mean, you need to see the financials and everything in a timely manner and, but there's certain things that you're, whether it's us or somebody else, it's, I mean, there's going to be some behind the scenes happening that maybe deals with real estate and we can't say anything.
Abby.
So first, I'll speak as Abby, not, not the chair of EDC. One, I have never experienced, I've been involved in a lot of boards, a lot of committees throughout my time. I've never seen such engagement at a local level with such a variety of interaction with business owners, with entities, with, you know, and so the thought and prospect of that possibly not being as engaging is disheartening. If it, if it were to go to not just within Ponderay County, I think I have a lot of respect for Ted, but there's not a lot of Ponderay representation compared to what I've seen at EDC. That's, so that's Abby. Now, as the chair of the EDC, thanks, guys.
You're welcome.
It, these things take time. I think having local control, I think for county commissioners are a board and had opted into '09 to be able to funnel that for economic development through the designation of an ADO as well as other economic viable. But for if what's being proposed is that the commissioners have more vote than the other board members.
Which it's not.
That's, that's how it sounds.
Okay, so let me be really clear.
Yes.
I have never stated that, I have never articulated that, I have never desired that. So just to be clear.
Yeah, so I guess my question goes into what would the more oversight look like, in your opinion, to the commissioners? Because, you know, I've not been involved with the ADO as EDC for a long time, being super engaged, I kind of got shoved in. But, so what more engagement would the board want to see than what has been currently happening or has happened in the past?
So engagement is not really the right word there.
So oversight.
And oversight might be the right word. What, what I want embedded in a contract is transparency and the ability to get documents quick, quickly, to have sort of an open book policy with what's going on and to get clear answers on a, in a real-time basis. And I don't want to get to the.
Yeah. So, address what, what, that was a, the issue with EDC then was bylaws. Of the layers that had to go through for anyone to really do anything was, was within the bylaws of the current EDC, in my opinion. You know, when you have one meeting a month and the board having to vote to do this, that, or the other, release things, that's where the bottleneck started occurring. And so having bylaws that there's, so I'll take my position at the city. So I have certain latitudes to do my job in a timely manner with things that rise to a level to, that goes to council or mayor for that. That's the component that was missing, is some anonymity to do my job. You know, so I think if that is more addressed in bylaws of the entity that the commissioners do have a representation on. So that's where I've seen, in the time I've been involved, bottleneck happens is I can't act because it hasn't gone to the board yet. So, and, you know, giving whoever it's designated, you know, certain latitudes to be able to make decisions to do that, you know. It's like an entity of any other is, you know, we, we all try our best to get, but there's some documents that have to go through PRA, you know, and have a public request. You know, we try to, when we have close partnerships, you know, hey, do you have this document? Well, you know, then technically the document was sent to me, so hey, I need a public records request. Obviously, I'm not going to do that for some simple things, but that layer isn't going to go away because that's just as a public entity, some kinds of requirement. So I guess I'm just, some of my questions is what changes are, would you really be proposing? Because if you have an entity that is accountable to too much, too many bosses, like, yes, we want to see economic development occur in Ponderay County, but they need latitude to do that as well. So what type of open communication are you actually proposing before?
Yeah, I'm just going to go with military terms, some military guy. I think chain of command is appropriate. I think that your representation as commissioners on the board, you have somebody in executive committee, which is your avenue, the channel two, S4. Let's just say, for example, Brian is the representative. I think the, the commissioners, that's who you talk to. That's the guy that brings it down. I think both the commissioners, that's your avenue, that's who you talk to. That's the guy that brings it down because he is part of Ponderay Board. Although I think that with the ADO is gonna be designated, you guys should be the champions for this ADO because you wanna see it succeed. But also you're gonna be building a relationship with the new entity. So you guys have to instead of saying, I wanna see this, I wanna see that, which is great. I think as you get that relationship happening, I think that will come. Get to know the new ADO, find out how to become on their team through the proper channels. I think once you do that, you guys are gonna be setting it up for success. Now, in two years, if you say, hey, you know, you tried. We think the direction that you guys are going, not the direction of Ponderay County, change your mind. That's okay. I think that's the, I think that's the best thing that you guys have in place. Because not everybody's gonna be perfect, but in my opinion. Less than two years for the new ADO to establish everything that you want, you're asking for impossibility soon. Now, will they show you some proper steps and then move it forward to the direction that you want? I hope so, because ten years ago, I went to EDC meeting and there was like maybe this many people. Now we're packing the rooms in online, in person. That's unheard of in this place. So as we have this, I would say the shakers and movers in the in the house right now, let's just boost that up and let's just keep going. For me, the ADO, whoever it becomes, I just wanna be a like a champion for those guys for the simple fact that. We know we all want growth. We know we want success. We know we want to put this county on the map. And how do we accomplish that? I think the only way to do it and work it together. So I would just say. As you get to know the new ADO, I think some of those relationships and some of the app that you're gonna want might be might come easier. You know, they'll be like, okay, perfect. But at this point right now, if if the board of commissioners comes to say, hey, we need to see this all the time. We need to see this and this. You're putting a strain on the spice. And I feel like, in my opinion, that's my gravity and I would not want you to do that. As a taxpayer, I would highly recommend you do not do that. As a business person in Ponderay County, I will not vote for you to do that. Let those people do their job, just like me as a as a a taxpayer in this county. I want you guys to do your job. I don't wanna tell you how to do your job, but I trust you to do your job. So what I ask from you guys, do the same. Trust those people because I feel like give them an opportunity to shine and they will do the bit. And I think that if you guys do that and if you guys are like new ADO's champion, you're gonna get what you want. So I feel like trust the process, let it happen, and we'll just move on from there. I just think that. You guys are all three smart guys. Um, I feel like the county trusts you guys. You guys reciprocate, do the same thing, trust the new ADO, let them let them do their work. If you don't like it in two years, let them do that. Change it. Let them do their job. I think you guys, I think you guys are, you guys are very good at what you do. Let them be very good at what they do. Think that'd be perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Cockle, over to you.
Thanks. I I I appreciate the uh the opportunity to to comment, although I do wanna make sure that my I keep my comments. Pretty brief just because Better Cities is not here and I don't want to uh uh present on behalf of a a potential candidate. Uh without all all uh possible candidates being allowed to present. The uh the idea of a contract with the county is an interesting one. Uh traditionally, the ADO's contract with the state. Uh Department of Commerce and there's not a contract with the um the county as such. However, I would say that uh like you would see in our in our proposal, the the first step uh in establishing a relationship with the county is developing a county specific economic development strategy. And that's not just a document that's created in conjunction with the commissioners, but with all the stakeholders. Uh and that is what provides the uh the marching orders for the ADO. So whether uh the the county would like to do a contract in addition to that or an ILA, uh that that is up to the commissioners and. Uh I think it's probably in in this case, it might be a a good idea just to help move forward out of a out of the previous uh. Uh arrangement you had with the EDC as a way uh to move ahead.
Great clarification there, Ted. You're saying most counties don't have a contract. County commissioners don't contract with ADOs. ADOs contract with the EDC exclusively in your experience?
No, the the when you when you as the. Yeah, when you when you as the county designate an ADO, um then the commerce and the ADO have a contract with each other.
And we do have a contract with our ADO?
That's it. That's it, right, Tim.
I I I know. We're all on the same page. Okay, that makes it easy. I throw that thing in the circular file and kind of loops.
Well, well, we would do that if the county weren't putting in a a substantial amount of money. I mean, if it were just a case of the state funding the ADO. Okay, I mean, then there's not there's. The difference is we're putting a bunch of money in and the taxpayers deserve to have, you know, a clear understanding of what they're getting for their money. Am I missing something there?
I I agree, Robert. I think that's probably why that instrument was put in place is because of the additional funding. In this case, that additional funding was primarily to have them have a full-time staff. And this is where I really get bent out of shape over. Kind of principled, and I I do believe you're principing, but it's the end of the day. The primary utilization of those funds was for the wages of a full-time staff. And the end of the day, that doesn't leave a lot of opportunity for uh oversight. If the way to pay the wages, that's what it was for. And I think that's why that contract came into play. Was has to do with that uh director, the EDC director. And so that's probably why a lot of county don't do that. Is they're providing that staff inside their own organization and they're contracting directly with commerce. It's so likely.
That that I'm glad you raised that point, uh because until now I hadn't really thought through this clearly enough to understand that one of the decisions we might be making. Is whether we are simply as a county gonna be giving money to the new ADO. Or whether we're or or what the relationship might be between our dollars from the county to. What previously was a staff member that we had.
Yeah, well, I think the direction we got pretty clearly, legal advice is don't do that again. So I think we are talking about dollars and and that is my understanding that we're talking about dollars.
But we're but but we're still talking about a sales tax rebate or.
Yes.
Talking about oh nine.
Yes.
But we do not have the dollars unless we have an ADO.
That's correct.
So the how is that different? I I and and maybe Jeff has the answer there. Certainly Abby's half raising her hand. Um, I how is that different than other counties? It's a we get.
I don't know.
We don't give anything. Those are oh nine funds. It's a sales tax. Let's go to Jeff and then Abby. Jeff.
So the way other counties will would uh have generally, well, two counties that I am the ADO for, Ferry and Stevens, the way they handle that is. So in Stevens County, they have asked us to do a a lot of broadband work for them. And so I have a separate interlocal agreement with them on how to spend those point oh nine funds that they dedicate towards broadband. Other than that, um the I I don't think that the. And and I've I've reviewed your contract with EDC before and it it just kind of looked like you were turning over a large portion of your. Point oh nine funds for them to administer and I know a lot of that went to salary. The in in Ferry and Stevens County, the commissioners retain control over the point oh nine funds throughout. It does not transfer to the ADO. The the ADO can bend or ask for uh point oh nine funds to fund certain projects. But other organizations within the county frequently approach the uh the board of commissioners uh for point oh nine funds for their projects as well. If that if that gets to your point.
It could do.
It does, yeah.
Abby. Yeah, we're plus per matches and, you know, there's, you can do it a couple of different ways. Either designating here this is for that or um, you know, to help with. Hey, this is the project. Here's the match that we have similar, you know, um to the studies that have been done, facilitated through the EDC.
So. So I'm sure that works. I just have a just a statement, maybe a bunch too, that that I'm sure you guys are aware that you guys do not get the full amount of point oh nine funds. You guys retain some of that funds, right? So you know that you don't not give out that hundred percent to the previous EDC.
Right.
So you know there's about fifty-ish thousand dollars that you guys retain that you guys hold still.
Yeah.
So you guys don't get the full amount. So you guys do control some of that money. So it's just to add, just just for the information to be out there that not full hundred percent of that funding goes went to the EDC. So you guys do hold some of that funding back.
Right.
So just make sure that I should make sure that we're clear on that, that.
Yes.
You guys are aware of that.
And there's nothing to say that we have to split all of our eggs in one basket.
Exactly.
And we can't retain, but the question is at hand is when we do decide to award that, how much. Again, lack of better word, oversight goes with that. You know, it it but we do include uh disperse those oh nine funds in various ways. And and we do really, and we've had that discussion here even as it relates to Ted and their dues and increase in that, and that accomplishes that.
So that, I mean, to my point, so I would just say that we guys do have a little percent on how you guys feel like you should dis- disperse those funds. So you do have some, you do have something that already going on.
And we've never had all of our eggs in one basket. Half of the funds have sat in in this silent reserve and have been requested for projects. And then, of course, um Ted and the EDC have both been around for a while. Um, so I. Uh I I mean, I hear what you're saying. Yeah, I don't know. Something to chew on.
That is something to chew on and to, that opens up, that's a great point, Mark, and whether. Yeah, that that should be part of the discussion and I have not reviewed uh any of the applications yet. And to see what requests they've made for county, right, oh nine funds. So. That's a great point. Floor is open.
I just wanna um give an example. Uh, Mark brought it up as well, but time. So I've been with the city of Newport for two years. Um, I've been working on wastewater study for two years. Um, looking at a huge project. That project will not come to fruition until completion for another six to eight years. So when we're looking, there's things that, like Mark was saying, things that can be put in place. But um even grant cycles, a lot of times you see one a year. And so. That's just the award, not the execution of a project as well. When we're when we're talking about these types of projects. Um, whether it's going for more infrastructure or special infrastructure, they take time. And so just keep in mind and be mindful as you are watching whoever the new ADO is. That you have to build some time into that and have realistic expectations of how fast entities work. When you have the structure in place to move things forward. It it is time consuming. And after ten years, I can say, I've been here ten years and we've got a new wastewater update and collection projects. I'm an advocate camper because for the size of that type of project, so there's different sizes of projects. So just keep that in mind of when when you're setting expectations of how long. Some of these cycles and things actually take.
I'm with you there, Abby. Jeff, can you tell us about what, uh I just for frame of reference here? What does, what what is the cost of a county strategic plan? I mean, I I think I remember you wrote one for Stevens County about what did that cost, if you're allowed to say?
Uh, certainly. I I think we uh ended up billing them about about ten thousand dollars for that. Uh, and that was about a uh a three-month process to uh to do some stakeholder engagement and then. Uh, write the document and and run the drafts through the the not just the TED board, uh but through the county commissioners as well.
Got it. Thanks. Floor continues to be open. Please speak up.
Well, some of these are gonna have to run congruously. Um, we're eleventh hour to be. Um, making uh dramatic changes, big changes, sweeping changes. It's been this way for all of however long, and I think I view this as an opportunity to do a lot of cleanup, to raise the bar. Uh, to uh learn from the structural deficiencies um that were present in the EDC. Uh, they were present in the bylaws that still exist in this contract. Um, and 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 so that part's critical, but I am mindful. I think the genesis of the whole conversation really is. How many dollars we spend in dispatch and corrections and counseling services. And 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 all the backside cleaning up a mess and how little we invest in prosperity and growth for the people of the county. Um, that's the goal, uh for me, is economic development will cite at that. Um, I I for my part, I will say when you're drafting that, Robert, um Commissioner Gentle's comfort, her level of oversight is that the board has a representative. And um I that that representative has the same voice as everyone else on that board. If I had a problem with the way things were going or in for their new bylaws or 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 in this case, I would send it through Brian and and that would be suspicious to me. Simply because whether I agree or disagree with the way they're changing things. These people are the appointed people of Ponderay County. They represent some of the larger entities and they send up people who disagree with commissioners, who who just do it differently than us. And their voices, i- in this case, actually more important than mine because I'm not on the board. So. I I view that structure as as very intentional by RCW. It's the reason the funds are dispersed to begin with is because the county has those voices required. The cities give the voice and, you know, port pew to everybody else, right? And and tampering with that, I I to me feels like uh trying to have my way and trying to like Commissioner Gentle knows better than. I might, I might know better than half the board, but I don't know better than all of them. I might not know better than one. I so I I I just don't wanna have my thumb on the scale there. It is a little bit organic. It is informed by the fourteen thousand people of Ponderay County. Um, and I'm I'm trying to be very, very mindful of that. It is, this is not how I have a design, I cannot, I I've been, you know.
Kelly Sartor, so over to you.
Hey, thank you very much. Um, I've got quite a few notes here, but first of all, I'd like to thank Jeff. He clarified a lot of things just with the few minutes that he spoke. And so some questions did come up from that conversation and um. Also, I'm representing responsible for the Northeast Washington. And I guess one of my thoughts here is what caused all of this to happen in the first place? I think sometimes we need to go back and take a look at what caused it. Why are we where we're at right now? And um how can we prevent that from happening again? And I don't think there's, we're definitely not in a position to offer a contract, one way or the other. And just based on what I heard from Jeff and just based on the on the exchange of conversation right now. Uh, the oversight issue is a huge issue and uh transparency is another huge issue. I I really liked what was said earlier with the, there needs to be a clear set of expectations. And those expectations need to be set prior to any contract being signed. And um so so anyway, this is really a serious issue for Ponderay County and I think. The longer, you know, not necessarily years and years, but let's take, give it some time and really hash this out. So it doesn't happen again because we've really lost a lot of graft. And we don't wanna see that happen again. We've got some really good people out there that wanna see. We've got some really good people out there that want to see Ponderay County grow economically. And so let's do it right this time, and start asking the tough questions. So thank you for allowing me to speak.
Billis, thanks very much. Anyone else online who would like to speak, please start speaking. All right, let's wrap up in our remaining few minutes here in the room and with the principals.
Unmuted, no hand, but unmuted.
She has several comments.
Oh, please, feel free, go ahead.
Actually, I sent a list of questions via email, because they're pretty in-depth just now in response to your in response to your discussion. And I think some of them will probably require some consultation before answering, but I just wanted to basically get it on record that I've sent in some questions for clarification.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Hello, what's up? Sorry, this is Jane Wells. I sent, I sent a couple emails today of concerns and suggestions. And also, I was wondering if the commissioners would please consider posting documents ahead of their decision or the public meeting for the community to look at, to review, and possibly make suggestions, too. I'm, I'm hoping that there will be more open government in Ponderay County. And if it would, I would appreciate seeing the request for proposals. And please take a look at my email to all of you, and document my comments, too, before. And I also recommended allocating the money and responsibilities to Ted, that email, too. So thank you, bye.
Thanks, Jane. And I guess while we're, while we're in this session, I'll ask my fellow commissioners their thoughts about posting a link to the proposals online such that people don't have to make public records requests for them?
I think that some of that is proprietary, and it would have to be redacted. I don't, I, with it on the spot, Robert, I'm gonna say no. But I would have to think about it further. Those were not created with the idea that they would be released without redaction and without oversight. And I think that the entities involved that created those didn't create those with that in mind, that that was a public document. Frankly, I would hope that the public would trust us with that level of decision without that level of micromanaging, that the commissioners are looking at that closely.
Yeah, so the RFP process doesn't, so it's available just for the asking and public records request. So anybody who wants to ask for it and you'll get it redacted or not, I have the idea on that one. But the, but the RFP process is going precisely this design, and we can get as big and as expensive as we want. But the function of the EDC was to do precisely this. The people that represented the rest of the people went to the EDC, read the RFPs, made the recommendation. This is hardly three guys sitting at a table deciding on behalf of everyone.
Yes.
This is by design, by RCW, the way it is supposed to go. And 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 frankly, we've been at it for a good while. So the idea that you're making public records requests two hours before we're we're scheduled to make the decision on agenda is 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 concerning to me. This is a ridiculous level of transparency, frankly. The number of meetings, the idea that someone can sit in their pajamas with a cup of coffee halfway across the world and participate in what was not even going to be a workshop is remarkable. It's absolutely remarkable. And so let's not throw the baby out with the bathwater here.
Respectfully, respectfully, Commissioner Gentle, I, I didn't get noticed until this morning that this was even going to be a topic today or a possible decision, so that is why I'm asking for the documents ahead of the here, public hearing. Thank you.
Right, so, on this, I will say, between myself and Brian and John, this is a clear difference of opinion. And and I think the public, I mean, from my perspective, redact what? This is a document that was prepared to be submitted into the public record through its commissioners. So I I I just see this totally differently in terms of transparency. Who cares what, why someone wants it? They're the public. We are supposed to be open with the public. So unless Dolly has a, Dolly Hunt has an objection to them being posted online, I would I I would, I think they should be posted with a link so anybody could review them. We are not the keepers of all knowledge, we are not the keepers of all wisdom. If someone wants to take the time to look at a document on which we, the commissioners, are gonna be making decisions on their behalf, I want them to have it. So last, Dolly, and you may even just ask Kelly and Jeff, is there anything in the documents that were submitted with the proposals that you would see as proprietary, you know, need to be redacted to protect the business relationship? Or just the possibility?
I'm gonna be very upfront, I submitted a question when we had the question period, and I asked, is this available to the public? And I was told, after the process.
Were you told that by?
Right, because he was the one that took that and talked.
The question was, because that would allow information that, it would allow access to other entities to their request.
To deals in the making and possible ones under NDA. And so, and so don't misunderstand me, Robert, if 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 we're clear on all fronts, post a link. It's it's it's, it is or is going to become a public document. I just can't say that it is, because somebody comes into this under an NDA and disclosed something in the RFP that that sort of indicates that, or it doesn't take any imagination to see how projects are hung for a year or two at a time. It's outside my my legal, you know, purview there.
Question, too. Ms. Wells said, public hearing, this is, this is not a public hearing, it's a decision by the board.
Yes.
And what I see is, and no offense to anyone, please, it's not meant that way, as if you if you post it and take public comment, again, you're not getting this ball moving. You're gonna hold off, and you're, the only ones who, it hurts, is Ponderay County and businesses that need
This is, this is not unlike a dysfunctional family arguing over, they can't get a job done because nobody wants to take responsibility and make a decision while the house is falling down. Okay? I'm here to tell you, I'm ready to take responsibility and make a decision, let the chips fall where they may, okay? And 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 whether that's a lack of transparency, I don't know, I'm not trying to hide anything. But Ponderay County is in due of getting their act together, getting some collaboration, having some cooperation with each other, and building some trust, and getting this accomplished.
Salt Creek Sun, over to you.
We got one there.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I wasn't able to flip the icon or the name over to something else in time. So I'm not speaking as a Salt Creek Sun, I'm speaking from my experience running a project that was under, well, directly with the State Broadband Office. And we were given very clear, and Commissioner Rosenkrantz might call the meeting, we were very, given very clear warning that just because it is a public process, it is a public application and a public process, because private entities were involved or other entities were involved, there was a process that we had to go through before we could give out any information submitted to the project under a ERA and the Public Records Act request, because of proprietary information. And as soon as the private business is involved, it has to go through all of that vetting, so it cannot just be openly available right off of that. Thank you.
Very good. Final word, we're running out of time, thanks, only goes to Jeff Cockle, please go, go ahead, Jeff.
Just as as a public entity, all of our stuff is submitted with open, open access in mind. So there is no, nothing in our document that is, would be redacted.
Thank you, thanks all, we're at three o'clock. This has been a helpful discussion, we will carry it on, and it will be continued. Thanks all.
And clarifying, when will this be on your next agenda?
Sooner or later.
We're gonna get this for end, okay, for the first.
Right.
Okay, so I have a question.
Yeah.
I would ask, do not release anything if you decide to do that till we score the next one.
That's, we don't care if ours is released, but I think the process needs to be completed and.
I think we're pretty well there, I guess, commissioners, we're gonna wait for the third story.
Okay, so we will try to get that bit in this week, and then we'll burn it to as soon as possible.
Okay, so just to carry on for one more minute, so I think we have, so Jeff said his can be released. Kelly just said yours can be released.
Yes.
But her point was that she'd like all three of them at the same time.
Oh, they're, one, okay.
Yes.
Oh, that's great.
Yes, but not one will be released without everything.
So once the third one's in, we'll post them online.
Well, I'm still not sure about that.
Okay, we'll let it go, yeah, we'll let it go. But, yeah, if you're gonna say you gotta post them online, we're not gonna vote on it, you're just gonna do it. Because I think you guys need to vote, or vote, right? You're not gonna just say, we're gonna do it, you guys are gonna need to vote on this, right?
They will vote.
Yes, that's right. So I just want to make sure that it'll be clear that you guys will vote.
Yes.
You guys, you guys have a hard job, and thank you.
Yeah, let me on the part. Well, crazy, we've got about a minute here.
Happy twenty twenty four, guys.